Today I have the pleasure of introducing Terrell Hobson. He is a fourth grader that was selected by his principal to represent Glover CLC, The Wildcats. Terrell is and has always been an outstanding student as evidenced by previous Ames Web scores in the Universal Enriched Tier and earning a 447 Advanced Score on his third grade Fall Reading OAA.
Alright.
Quite a pedigree right there. However, Terrell always pushes himself to do better and he proved this by earning a 478 Advanced Score in his Spring OAA reading score and a 437 Accelerated Score on the Spring OAA in math. It should be noting that reading and math are his favorite subjects. Terrell is a wonderful role model for all the Glover students. He has never even had an office referral in all his years at Glover. He has consistently made the honor roll year after year. Terrell plays football for the East Dragons and even gave up part, part of his practice time to be here tonight, which explains why he's wearing his football uniform. He also enjoys playing basketball just for fun. Glover is proud of Terrell and proud to have him represent The Wildcats. Terrell, come on up.
(Applause).
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 (Applause). Would you like to introduce that lady right there who was taking our picture first?
That is my principal, Mrs. Rich.
Proud to be his principal. And would you like to introduce the other people that came?
That is my mom, Mrs. Smith, my sister Jane, and my grandma Michelle.
Thank you so much.
(Applause).
(Applause). I think, I think his mom was a graduate of Garfield High School, is that correct?
That was.
Alright, yeah.
Well, so you don't miss any more of your practice. We will let you scoot on out of here, but with our great thanks for taking time out of football to come see us, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work.
Yes.
(Applause). I'm not sure who is more excited for him, himself or his sister. Alright, so now is the time in our meeting for community and school reflections. We have started school. We have lots going on, I'm sure. Anyone want to go first? Alright.
I have the pleasure of opening day, going to several schools. I started off with Case and Landale, Pfeiffer, Smith and Ennis, and went to Litchfield Middle School, Portage Path and Kenmore High School. And at Landale, Dr. Quinn shared with all of her classes what she considered to be how to be successful, how to make good choices. So she had three rules: be safe, be respectful, be responsible. And as I was listening to her share that with the, I think with third grade at that time, I was looking and reflecting upon the world in which we live, if we would follow these rules, what a better world we would have. Just to be safe, to be respectful, and to be responsible. We see it everywhere where people need to learn that particular lesson. I was also struck by, we've got beautiful CLCs, but when I walked into, I believe, Smith and over at Landale, Pfeiffer, they're old buildings, but they have such wonderful character. And the students are still doing an excellent job even when there's no air conditioning, very small hallways in some cases. But the janitors, the custodians of those buildings do an excellent job of keeping those buildings in good repair and they make you feel good just by being in them, even though they're not sparkling brand new like our CLCs. And they don't have all the computer technical things as our CLCs have, yet they have what most important, and that's teachers who love students, students who love learning. And so we appreciated that, to have the opportunity to be reminded of what education is all about. Then also, in our journal, Ohio School Board Association, and I'd asked Marilyn, I don't know if we could have gotten it done, I almost forgot the poster done, but I'm hoping that as a board we can show our support for public schools by getting a little poster, gathering around it and standing up and holding one or more of these posters and then send that back to OSBA so that they know that Akron Public Schools stands up for public schools. Just so happens somebody in here you might know was standing up a poster.
Looks like you.
So it was a good start of the school term and we hope that we can, you know, get that poster sometime soon to get that done. Thank you.
I also had the pleasure of going to a couple of schools this, this year as well. Firestone, on the first day I was able to stop at Firestone High School because I wanted to get over and see how things were going and it was very quiet. I mean, you could hear a pin drop in the cafeteria where they were having a study hall. I thought, man, this is an atmosphere that's really conducive to learning and, I mean, they started really early, so it was really nice to see that happening, especially when you have someone new that's coming in and you're not sure what the climate could actually be when they first come in, but it was very nice to see those young people in there studying and getting ready for their classes as well as doing any homework. Also, I went to North High School, which was nice also because it's my alma mater for one, I don't get a chance to get up there, but two, that Mrs. Teck over there has done a great job and you can see the atmosphere of North High School being a real good atmosphere for, for learning as well. She had staff over there, were really respectful and the students, which was really nice to see that. They were saying, "How are you, sir?" And I'm thinking, "Whoa, who's just saying sir?" You know, but it was nice to hear the kids saying that and being respectful to adults as well as their classmates. And I was also over at East High School, which was, is very well taken care of over there too. The students were very nice, very likeable, the staff were happy, enjoy us, and, I mean, it seemed like the whole school was just happy. And so that was very nice to, to see that happen and then to me that makes it good because if the kids are happy, of course they're going to want to learn, and so that was very nice to see that. And then the last thing I have is, at Summit County Juvenile Court with Judge Tia Dossio, Linda Tia Dossio, we started these circles and they're called Peace Circles. And from those Peace Circles, there were very, there were subcommittees that were laid out from that, and one was the Education Committee. And I was, chose to be the chair of the Education Committee and we have, I have a group of young, a group of people who work, young people too, that work with me on some things that we wanted to do. And so we had, we went into, to train some C-Tag people and it was very good, our responses back from them, they were very happy. And we are planning to have what we call Discussion Circles, which is similar to a Peace Circle. There's certain rules that you have to follow, certain things that you have to go through as far as the kids and the person who's running the circle, who is called the Peacekeeper. And we want to, the kids to get engaged, want them to learn, and we're in the process of trying to create a movement, a movement of kids coming to school, coming to learn, staying away from criminal behavior, supporting one another and keeping each other out of trouble with the law and while they're in school. So we're hoping that we will get that movement going. And we, we're going to start really just two schools, and that was at Buc-Do and at East, but with the others that were, were trained from Kenmore and, Kenmore and, no, Kenmore East, I'm sorry, Kenmore East, North.
North.
And we are, we're, we're going to have those individuals start as well because we were going to do a pilot, then tweak the pilot and see what we can do to make it better. But since they have individuals who are trained and eager and ready to go, we're going to lay it out at those schools as well. So we have four instead of just two schools. So we're anxious to see how this is going to work, see if it's going to help these kids and if it's going to be something really good, which I really think it will because you have the adults who are excited. I think the kids will have fun in these circles, but while at the same time learning. So this is going to be something we're excited about starting and getting, getting ready. We hope to be started possibly within a couple of weeks in those schools and having some fun with the kids and the kids learning some things from those circles. So I wanted to mention that, I want, I briefly mentioned some of it last meeting, but I didn't get in detail such as this, but the C-Tag people, they're really excited to start and they will start probably in a couple of weeks. As we get closer and closer, we'll talk to everyone, let everyone know how we're progressing and then we will really lay it out the way that it is laid out so that maybe we'll get other schools that want to be involved and we'll train those individuals. Because it's not a, it's a program that's not supposed to be for the court. It's a program that the judge just started. She wants us to go out into the community, which we're also out in the community now doing things with, with people in the community, with kids and parents who have some problems or issues, people who referred individuals or parents or families to that. We're, we're taking this to the community and we're going to let go of it and it's going to be something for the community to help itself. So the school system is part of the community, so we decided we needed to get involved with the schools as well. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
You know, it's always special to engage with the community. I think part of the, our belief is that education is a community proposition as well. So this, right before school started, I had the privilege, this serves as the co-announcer for the annual Labor Day Parade. It was just so wonderful to see so many kids out, just having a good time before they get, before they get ready for the real grind. On this past Sunday, we were at Summit Lake Community Center where they hosted a mini-market. Summit Lake Community is considered a desert community, so they don't really have a green grocer where they have access to fresh fruits and vegetables. And so they've been hosting Summit Food Policy Coalition and some other community partners like the Food Bank and Let's Grow Akron and a number of other folks have been hosting mini-markets once a month there. And it was so, it's so funny, but also so rewarding to see kids buzzing around fresh fruits and vegetables, tasting things for the first time and just seeing their response. You know, I'm a firm believer, if you just change the way people eat, you can change the way our kids think. So getting some of those processed foods out of their system and some of the fresh fruits and vegetables are important. But I just wanted to give a special shout out to Joe Tucker over at South Street Ministry, who also provided brand new books for the kids. So they were able to pick up new books, they were really excited about that, and so that's always good to see. Finally, on this past week, we were at East CLC, myself, Lisa Mansfield and Patrick Bravo for the summer graduation. You know, I, you know, I think we can never really underestimate how significant that is. I mean, this year, it just seems like there was so much buzz and so much, much wonderful energy in the room. You know, that's a real press to not graduate with your class but still have the tenacity to just stay the course and see it through. And you can just tell the young folks, you know, it was something about, you know, all of the district, all the high schools are there, but it was something as if all of the students became just one school, rooting for one another, and so that was a wonderful thing to experience. And I just have great hope for the, the class of young folks who graduated last week, and I think they have great hope for themselves.
I have a couple of things. First of all, I had the pleasure, I've got two boys now at Firestone, I'm happy to have them at one school, which I know Lisa can relate to. And I guess I was kind of chuckling to myself because it's, it's like chaos, but it also you see the progression they're making. Firestone has gotten everything underneath ground, that's the geothermal aspect of the construction done. And now if you go by, you can see there's a lot of cinder blocks going up and it's nice to see a structure there. When you saw a year of what looked like flat line lands and tubes and it's like, where's this thing going? But it's chaos, but the kids are doing well and, you know, muddling through the little avenues we can go to to get kids dropped off. So I wanted to say that that, that's, that's nice to see and nice to see the school moving forward. Also had the pleasure of meeting with a man named Dallas Billington, who's, I guess it would be his grandfather started Akron Baptist Temple and Dallas has started a kind of a, a church downtown and he's looking for a venue, but they are trying to raise funds and/or supplies for our kids, similar to the backpacks type program, and I want to bring that to the attention of the board as well as the public. And I want to talk to whomever and I'm looking for guidance to facilitate that. Anytime someone's willing to contribute to our students, I think that's something we should embrace. I know Dallas personally, I know he'll follow through on it, it'll be a win-win for everybody. I do have one negative thing I heard about that I wanted to bring up, and as, as most people know, there's testing that's done at the beginning of the year to measure improvement of our students. A lot of the focus going forward will be improvement of our stus from lowest common denominator to even the gifted ones. And I heard reports from two parents who know me that some testing teachers were actually telling the kids not to try and not to worry about it. And that suggests to me that if the students tank their first test, there'll be vast improvement by the end of the year, and I don't think that that's where we want to be. I think we want to have realistic testing of our students from the get-go. And just because you have a student that starts it bright and gets a little brighter but does not have that huge gain, you know, I don't know what can be done about it, but I do want to say that we want to have true testing of our students and to try and, what we used to call sandbagging, the test simply to show great improvement, I think is, is not the way to go. I think that that's, compromises the students. It shows them testing at one ability, when in essence they should be testing at another. So I just wanted to bring that to the attention of, of my fellow board members as well as the public.
Can I just piggyback off that real quick? I know that I've heard some things that, that relate to students, but when you ask the teachers what they actually said and what the students heard, it can sometimes be two different things. When you have very gifted and very talented kids, there's nothing that stresses them out more than taking a test and not knowing the answer. If you're a bright kid and you're used to getting sitting down with a test and going, "Oh, know that, know that, know that, know that," all of a sudden you're faced with a test where even if someone tells you, "You don't know this material." It's okay if you don't do well on this one because eventually you're going to get retested on it. Sometimes when you process that through a teenager's brain, it sounds like, "I don't care how you do on this, you can tank it if you want." When what they're really trying to say or what they're really saying is, "Don't worry about this, you're not supposed to know the information." It's okay because we're, there's reports all over the country really of kids who are feeling ill because they're getting, they're facing a test that they don't know the answers. And there's nothing that a bright kid likes about not knowing the answers, they're not used to it. So perhaps that's a situation that needs looked into, but I, some of the people that I spoke to, when you dig deep, a little deeper, you find that the actual situation was an attempt at reassurance, that it's not something you should know and it's okay.
Okay, and I don't doubt that. Now, I don't want to say that this is the rule versus the exception.
Sure.
But it's something that I see as a potential problem, if it's not already a problem. I wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Yeah, I think some teachers did a really good job of conveying that because my daughter had taken a test and she got something like four out of six. I was shocked. She had to help me. She was like, "No, no, I don't know the material." Yeah, 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 so.
Yeah, so saying, "It's okay if you don't do well on this," in a teenage brain sometimes doesn't process the same as, as a reassurance. So just, just throwing that out there as a possibility.
I don't doubt there's some truth to that.
Yes. Anyone else have anything to share? Okay. We don't have any requests to address the board today, but we do have several communications and recognitions. So my first pleasure is to introduce Terry Albanese, who is here. She is the Assistant to the Mayor for Education, Health and Families, and she's here to talk to the board. You can come on up.
(Applause).
You can write some cards, I'm not sure that I have enough. I don't know where you want me to stand.
Upper ear's fine, that way they can hear you all right.
Then we can point all the cameras towards you.
Yeah. Use it. Is it on? Don't get to use it? Sorry.
Thank you so much for giving me a few minutes. My name is Terry Albanese and I am Mayor Plisswolling's newest member of his cabinet. I'm the newest member of his cabinet. My title is Assistant Mayor for Education, Health and Families, who is in that order for a reason. We know that education is important to the mayor, he's a resident for any length of time. He would like nothing more than to offer his fellowship to every student who wants it, who graduates from an Akron school. And although he didn't give me a lot of direction when I started, that's what I started doing, what would that look like, how would it work? And so I called upon some people and will call upon them again to share what I found so that we can work for it. So on the mayor's end, it's his emphasis to find the, the money for that. So I don't envy him that, but he has not lost that idea, he's still committed to that. And so we'll work in that direction. Again, he didn't give me a lot of direction, so what I did when I started, I just started calling people and said, "Can I meet with you? Can you tell me what's going on with Akron Public Schools?" And David James was gracious enough to meet with me, Lisa Mansfield and several others, so I could just find out. My world has been in higher education, medical education and health services research. So K through 12, it's a whole new ballgame for me, but I'm so excited about so many things that I've got to learn from the people that I've met with. And so grateful for the warm welcome. One of the other things that the mayor has done was signed up through the National Conference of Mayors to recognize October as the, the month for promoting anti-bullying, an anti-bullying campaign. And I don't know what you think about it. So I became as much of an expert as I could, the organization was supposed to send this information, eh, I got a little bit, so I've been researching that. But called upon Billy Soul and Captain Calvaro, so APB, and Dan Rambler and Andrew was, they were so gracious to meet with me and discuss, "How could we, how could we put on this event and do it in the most productive and positive way?" And so we're working on that. So if you'll save the date, October 7th, at the main library, probably 5:30, 6:00 PM, we're going to be working out the details in the next week or two. There's a video involved, you may have heard of it, it's called Bully. It's a film and it's very long, we're going to try to keep it a little bit shorter because it's very heavy. It breaks your heart and makes you sick to your stomach, so that is a little hard, but it's the reality that kids have gone through in this world. And we don't want to be a village, quite frankly. And so whatever we can do as a community to promote respect and responsibility and treating others that way as opposed to bullying, we're going to jump on board and do what we can to prevent that positive behavior from the entire community, not just the kids. So that's what I'm about. I'm here to support on behalf of the mayor, Akron Public Schools. And so please feel free to call upon us, I've called upon your staff. So grateful again for the opportunity to be here, to meet with so many of you, and I'm so excited about all the things that I've heard going on. It's just a great time to be involved and glad to be here. Thank you so much.
(Applause).
Next, we have a presentation from, presentation for Power Up, Green Up, and we have Sharon Seaton here.
Hello, everybody. How are you? I've done this with you before. Nice to see you again. Thank you very much for inviting me back again and organizing this, Tracy. Again, I, Sharon Seaton with Dominion, and every year we present our K-12 and higher educational grants. And I am very happy to say that we received a number of grant proposals and through the judging of all the proposals that we received, we selected, for this year we have 12 schools and organizations that are going to share a pot of $80,000, but only a couple are getting $10,000. And I know I was here last year for a couple, I think we had given, and it's always great to come back and provide another check for $10,000 to the Akron Public Schools, in this case the National Inventors Hall of Fame School for the STEM program, and it's the title of the program, and you might want to tell us a little bit more about it, Tracy, is the Power Up, Green Up program. If you'd like to share a little bit about that.
Sure. So this is the, this $10,000 will be used for STEM expansion efforts that will begin to occur throughout the district. And we'll be starting at the National Inventors Hall of Fame Middle School where we will pilot this program. There's an educator who started her own digital animation company, and she has actually developed several modules that a University of Akron candidate who might be the facilitator in our after-school club at the middle school will then take the kids through. The kids will actually learn how to animate digitally on the computer, but it's all environmental based. And so we're hoping that, well, we know that the standards will then transfer right into the classroom and they'll be able to use it as an enhancement to what the teacher is already instructing the kids to do. So this is going to be started here in the next few weeks with the person who's over that digital animation company. Her name is Stephanie Sutton. And then we hope to, we know we're going to start in Finley Elementary, which will occur in the spring, and then we're going to select one more place for that to spread out to. So very appreciative that this holds get the expansion work started within the North Cluster. It's wonderful to work with you again. Last year it was Sharon Cappan from the STEM School.
Yes.
And that work continues and we thank you for that, Sarah.
Well, you do a tremendous job, I just want you to know. It's always good to hear from the number of proposal that we get from Akron Public Schools. And when the judges read them, and this was very well rated, I mean, this was one of the highest rated ones, and it's my pleasure, I see Travis over there, to partner with you in so many other things that Dominion does and the Dominion Foundation, which was mentioned, the Backpack Adventure, we also support with that too. Lot of great things going in Akron with education, please keep it up. Here's the real one too.
(Laughter) Tracy's not going to get too comfortable because she is part of the next presentation. Some of our votes, and I'll let her introduce. She's right.
up while we talk about this. There has been a campaign that's been going on for STEM education and Burnett Williams with Children's Hospital and John Bellisimo with Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company have been leading a campaign team that includes Megan Everhard. And also, we're going to be talking about what happened with GAR and Kirsten Tote is here representing the GAR Foundation. And, and so at any rate, I'll just kind of go through this and share a little bit with you about why we're, we're here. We really just want to say thank you on behalf of the Akron Public Schools for your efforts. I know that you met on a monthly basis and you met with Superintendent James and also with Assistant Superintendent Ellen McWilliams to find out ways to help raise money for STEM education. And the photos that you see here are actually our STEM High School learners that we consider digital learners, critical thinkers and problem solvers, and those snapshots are of them in action. The funds that you have provided are really going to help us move that forward, that work forward. And we, you charged us, Kirsten, last year, you said, "Okay, if you guys can make, you know, if you can raise $117,000, we'll match it." So in fact, was it two, it was $234,000 and you said you'd match it. So we did that, but what really pushed us over the edge, which is why we want to thank you, John, is Goodyear came in at the end there and we, we met the goal early. He, they, all together they contribute $70,000, but the last $50,000 They, altogether, they contribute $70,000, but the last $50,000 really went in.
On behalf of Goodyear, and I'll speak for us, you know, we were really honored to be able to do this. I mean, a year and a half ago, I was at Co-Chair this with Burnett. You know, I had two questions, you know, "Why me?" and "What is STEM?" And then a year and a half, you know, I learned a lot, being the Director of the Innovation Center. We employ scientists and technical people all the time, so this is a real win for the community as well, Sir Goodyear. Thank you very much for the opportunity, and again, we really appreciate being able to be part of this. It's a great initiative that the schools have taken on. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I wanted to make sure that I acknowledge each of you individually. Burnett, thank you for your tireless work. I know you worked alongside John to organize the campaign team and to have those meetings. And I know that, I think the final push was the breakfast that you organized. Maybe you can tell a little bit about what happened in that breakfast. Instructional Leader Johnson, will you also join us up here, please?
Ellen was also an integral part of that team, so thanks, Ellen. You should be up here as well. We hosted in February, we hosted a community leaders' breakfast and tried to, not tried to, we successfully had representatives from many of our corporations present to not only hear about what is happening at our STEM High School, but also to experience the learners and to see the school. Our premise was that if they would have an opportunity to meet the students, to meet some of the leadership team under Principal Johnson's leadership, that there's no way they would not support the effort. And overall, we found that to be the case, that once our community leaders came through, had an opportunity to experience the school and meet some of the learners and meet the team there, when we made the ask, which we made my point to make, the ask that day of the breakfast, the majority of the folks that we made contact with said either yes today, or yes, maybe I can't write the check today, but we're going to support this effort. The other big part of what we were asking was not just for financial support, but the opportunity to partner with some of these corporations so that when this campaign is ended officially, as this particular GAR match campaign, that we would have organizations that would be willing to come in and partner, similar to what Goodyear is doing, and working with our students there at the STEM High School. So Principal Johnson was extremely helpful in organizing and made sure that our students were a part of that. And just the entire team here helped make it work, whether it was helping to write letters, and Megan, and with her experience at the Chamber, giving us that list of the corporations and helping us make sure that we had the correct addresses and some of those things. We had a representative from Gojo, Rita, who was very much a part of the team, another one of my colleagues from Akron Children's, who's a member of our foundation, worked with us. So this was truly just a team effort in every single regards, and we just tried to keep everyone in the loop and had a great time.
And you know, part of what the funds will do is help us to provide learning expeditions. And I know that not only are learning expeditions for the learners, but they're also for the learning coaches or the teachers. And Instructional Leader Johnson, maybe you can share what we've begun to do with some of the funding as far as professional development is concerned.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So one of the things we did this year was we partnered with a art company in Columbus called Journey 360. And the goal was to create a professional development, that was a year-long professional development, that embedded and infused our coaches with the permission to be creative. So this creativity camp, or what we call building a creative mindset, was done so that our coaches could walk into the classroom with the idea that they're going to give their learners permission to be creative. With that, we created an innovation portfolio where we're going to not assess the characteristics of innovation, but we're going to build and embed those skills as part of our everyday process. So the assessments will not only be whether or not they can get the work and they can understand it, but we're also asking them to master assessments such as communication, observing, all of those things that we want our learners to have when they walk away from the STEM High School, they go into college, and then take over in our communities as STEM leaders. So that was just part of our training this summer.
And Instructional Leader Johnson also talked about wanting to use the funds to help build an internship program, and that will allow our learners to get into the community, into places of business and organization, so that they can actually start putting those skills that they're learning into reality, those 21st century skills. I cannot forget to mention that Allison White played an integral role throughout the campaign efforts. She kept track to make sure that, you know, the money, that we were getting closer to that goal. And when we finally got that last bid, Kirsten, I have to say, we were so excited because, as you can see on the paper that you may have, which you can also see here on the screen, we, GAR, they challenged us, and we met the challenge, and we actually exceeded the challenge. But the $117,000 that the foundation committed to us really is going to make a huge impact in our district for STEM education and to further it. And we really want to thank you. And if you could also thank Christine Flores for the work of the foundation. Would you like to say anything, Kirsten?
Just that I appreciate the recognition, but really, you all make our work really easy because you take funding, and we get the great privilege of writing checks from the legacy of roadway and Galen Roush's generosity. You make the money impactful. You make it work, and most importantly, for the students that you all serve. So thank you, and bravo.
All right. Thank you very much. One last round of applause for the GAR Foundation.
I know our superintendent doesn't seek recognition, and oftentimes doesn't want it, but I also just want to say that David was there. I won't say every step of the way because we tried to use David when we needed to, understanding, you know, what he is good at, but also understanding the value that he would bring to some of the meetings and things that we would have one-on-one with some of our corporations. So, but not only that, I mean, if we sent an email to David, we got a response. If we had a question about anything, we were, you know, always, David was always responsive. And I just, I can't, you know, step away without thanking Superintendent James and saying, you know, "You need me, just call me." Not for his money, but I just wanted to mention that.
He was the closer, as you know.
He was the closer.
Thank you all for your time this evening. We appreciate your efforts. Have a wonderful evening.
And before you all leave, I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware that the initial challenge several years ago, back in 2012, was 650,000 from GAR over a three-year period, and that the community had to raise twice that amount, or 1.3 million. And we've, again, with this year's match, we've exceeded that $1.3 million match. So it's close to $2 million in assistance that's come in over the past several years to help our STEM program. So again, thanks to the GAR Foundation.
Kind of good news today. One of the best parts that I think that sometimes gets lost in the translation about all of the money and the innovation that goes into STEM is that it's not just sitting in a building downtown, that all the innovation, all those best practices are being taken and pushed out from there to the other middle schools, to the other clusters. So it's not just those students that benefit, it's all of our students that benefit from the knowledge that's being pushed out of STEM. So thank you very much, all of you, for your time there and for what that means to our district. Next order of business is the approval of our meeting minutes from the regular meeting from August 25. Moved and properly seconded. Any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? Harry Manroll, call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend.
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendation.
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration two recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Any questions about pushing out? Oh. Just wanted to point out in the items where the Board attended the Urban League event, where it is called the Last, what is it, Last Night on Bourbon Street? That was a fundraiser for the Urban League, it was their gala, in which our superintendent was recognized. Just wanted to point out that it wasn't the Board out having a big party on Bourbon Street, although that sounds lovely. I just wanted to point that out real quick.
We had no bourbon.
We had no bourbon, none. We were very well behaved, and our superintendent did a lovely job, and it was wonderful to see him running that. Any other questions, thoughts, comments? All right. Harry Manroll, call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes, abstaining from number 46.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, abstaining from number 49.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes, abstaining from number item 50.
Reverend Walker.
Yes, abstaining from item 51 or 52.
I have an abstention as well, from item number 46.
Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration three motions and six resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions about the second? I wanted to point out, and possibly have either Karen or Ellen talk about item nine a little bit. This is the Board's foray into bringing back instrumental music into the elementary schools. And if you could explain just a little bit, I thought maybe Karen. When it's you, I pointed at her.
So we have the opportunity to develop music literacy with all of our fifth graders. So our fifth graders will go through a changed curriculum where they will be reading music and then performing. It happened that we were contacted by the Carnegie Hall Recorder Group to see about putting on a concert. It fell quite nicely with the recorder curriculum, so that there will be a performance for all of our fifth graders at the Akron Symphony with the Carnegie Hall Group, April 1st. So you'll want to mark your calendars for that prestigious event, too. So it brings back the expectation that not just some fifth grader, but each fifth grader will have the opportunity to read music and play as a part of a group to produce music. So that's what changes with our fifth grade as a result of the Board reinstating that rich music curriculum.
I think the part that was really cool, when I think about Carnegie Hall, you know, just a thought that they could perform there one day, to put that in their psyche, you know? Yeah, that was really nice.
The most interesting thing to me in this is, especially if you've read anything about the connections between music especially, but the arts in general, about how those affect math scores and how they affect learning and how they make you want to come to school. Allowing this for all of our students, it's not in the same way we used to do it, but perhaps it's better because you're not getting pulled out of instruction, you're not having to give up something in order to take music. This is allowing all of our students to at least have an introduction, then, and be given an instrument so that they can play. Because part of it was, could your parents afford an instrument? Was there one available at your school? Could you be taken out of math class? Could you, would you miss those things? So without that as part of the barrier to some of our students, it'll allow for so many more to at least have that window of music opened up to them. Then, once they get to middle school or into the sixth grade, then they can make a choice. "Oh, I'd really love to play saxophone," or "I'd really love to play the trumpet." But they already have that foundation of reading music, so.
So what's the possibility, since we're so techie, of really having a video playing at Carnegie Hall while they play here? It's like Simopath, so that they're actually playing at Carnegie Hall.
It is the Carnegie Hall curriculum that is vetted through that organization. So let me research that with Dr. Child.
Any other questions, comments? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration seven Business Affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions or comments about this and business affairs?
I have a couple of questions on these, and I get a chance to talk to anyone ahead of time. Item number two, which is training for our teachers, does anyone have any idea what that is? Is it by hours? Is it by number of teachers that we train? Or how does it work as far as the price we're paying for that?
This is a partnership with Cleveland State University to get aspiring principals through a licensure program. We partner with Cleveland State and have a cohort of tapped teachers that we see as future principals. And so we pay part of their tuition, and that enables us to select them to go into that cohort program. So it's a partial payment. It's not the full payment of their tuition.
Where does the rest of the funds come from?
They pay for themselves.
Okay. Any idea what the proportion would be between what we?
This year, the amount, do you want to talk about the dollar amounts, this cohort?
$2,500 a person, and the total master, it's an alternative licensure pathway, takes 18 months, and it costs about $12,000 to $14,000.
So our stipend to each teacher would be roughly $2,000.
Very small.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Deborah, we have briefly talked about the computer hardware, and once I didn't get to the second part of the question, I asked about Chromebooks and how that experiment was going, and you said it went well. I'm wondering, is there any thought down the line of starting to expand into Chromebooks because of licensee of software that's non-existent or maybe less expensive than PC?
We actually are looking to get some additional Chromebooks. It's part of the budget set for this year because of the successful use of them. Now, as you realize, it might answer to you, not only were they being used for testing, we're now using them for ELA and MAM, Blended Learning. So some of those, we're now wanting to make sure that there's enough units in the schools so they can trade from room to room and then back up the hardware that we're also using. So it's a little bit of depending on where they are in the building as to what makes it more advantage to have the desktop or actually have the Chromebook. All right.
There's some questions. On the, the purchase item one, it says where it's needed. What does that mean? They translate?
Mr. Rambler, would you please decide to inform them about metal detectors, please?
Yeah, by our policy, we do metal detectors on a random basis for weapon detection intervention. We've had those for going on 10 years, so there's a couple that need to be replaced because they're not picking up those items. So it's just to replace one of those, and we're also adding to the Miller-South and STEM middle schools. We've never had them there, so those two purposes. Can I answer your question? Because I heard somebody was coughing on the hall, so I'm sorry if I missed you.
So the replacement ones are where?
Right. Well, what we've been doing is alternating them between a couple of schools. Miller-South and STEM don't have them, so we're placing them there. We've been moving about the other ones as buildings have closed, so. We've been moving about the other ones as buildings have closed, so we're actually replacing old ones afterward.
Okay, so where are they going?
Miller South and STEM.
The STEM, Miller South and STEM, that's the street walk through metal detector?
The third one's going to be at Barrett, which is our alternative location.
The five-hand held same location?
Those are actually going to also be for supporting events because we do metal detection supporting events as well.
Thank you.
And I have one more question and it's about item four with the tutor and teaching at the juvenile court. I guess what I'm curious about is the use of a 24-hour math tutor. I like the idea of the project, but I'm just wondering, do we have math tutors? I mean, could somebody explain a little bit more about what all that is? 24-hour math tutor just sets, I want some explanation for that. If all the kids are sleeping and someone's sitting there getting overtime, I just don't think it's why.
I think it's 24 hours a week.
Yeah, it's a part-time position.
It's not like.
Okay. These are all part-time positions.
Yeah. Right, these are, we're required to provide services at the juvenile detention center. We have teachers there and we have instructional support services. So, the 24-hour math tutors are typical, that's the tutors we have all throughout the city. So, they, the students there are eligible for them just like all other students based on need. So, this is, this is up to 24 hours a week is how they're hired.
And that's how we have it across the board and all?
Yep, all throughout the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, it did just say 124 hours, so that made the question, yeah, I got it.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Sins.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to share just a little bit, today is the 100th anniversary of West High School, which was actually then, I believe closed in 1975 if I'm correct.
No, it's not.
Oh, when was it actually?
Actually closed in 1980, but it became, it went from a high school in 1953 to a middle school and then closed in 1980.
In the eighties when it closed, okay. They were wrong with the building. But all right.
That's what's in the documentation.
I gotcha. So, it was originally open as a high school, it became a junior high and then it was closed and turned into senior living. So, the building was saved and it has beautiful old architecture. It was amazing to walk through. I took some pictures. If you were my Facebook friend, you can go on and see them or if you'd like to, I do have some. I'm probably going to share with Mr. Williams and he may want to put some of those up. Marble hallways or stairwells and brass handrails and woodwork that there's no way that you would put in any modern building today, but it's so beautiful and the craftsmanship was beautiful. There were several graduates there. I think the oldest, oh gosh, what year did she graduate? It was, I couldn't believe, she was, she had to be almost 100 years old, she was in her nineties, was the oldest graduate there. When I was there, I saw Ms. Kelly there, she was there and she won a prize. What did you win?
I won a gift card.
Um, no. They were having drawings and they served a free lunch and it was just a lovely evening or afternoon to be able to be there. My dad actually, my grandfather, my maternal grandfather graduated from last, my father went to the junior high until he was kicked out for fighting, which he credits actually for turning his life around. He was sent then to Perkins and began running with the new crowd before he went to Buckdall. And credits for him becoming a police officer because he actually sat down with the superintendent. I found out this story today, the stories you hear from your parents sometimes, it just amazes you if you think you know them. But his father drug him to the superintendent's office basically by his ear and had him beg not to be expelled. And he was sent and changed his whole life and he became a police officer, which I don't know as well. So, West High had a special place in my heart, so it was incredible to be able to go there. But I just wanted to piggyback a little bit off what Reverend Walker said. Who and I sometimes tend to be on the same wavelength, which I love. But the character of the building was incredible and beautiful, but it's nothing compared to the character of the people that we have that work for Akron Public Schools. And I think that's what was the shining thing that came out of the smiling older faces that I saw walking through that building or the sweet young faces that we get to see that are in our buildings now is the character of our teachers, it's the characters of our staff, it's the character of the families that make Akron Public Schools what Akron Public School is. It's a beautiful building. It's just a building. It's not a school anymore because kids are what make this school. The children and our staff are what make it a school. It's lovely and it's wonderful, but it's, it's the people and it's the character that is in them that we appreciate. So, I just wanted to say that's where my heart was today and it was just a wonderful time. So, if you ever get a chance to go through, if they ever have another open house or I'll bet if you knocked on the door, they'd let you go in. They were wonderful, so thank them for that. And I already welcomed Ryan earlier, but he is going to give us a brief chat or something.
Brief, just brief, I'll just echo what he talked about with the welcoming people from getting my office assembled to printer and all the help that I got from the staff and all the help that I see them giving the board while you went through the process of hiring, so. Got a week under my belt and just met wonderful people along the way. By the end of the week, I also talked to you in the interview about a transition plan. I'll deliver a transition plan report to you as well as maybe institute financing that you need and stuff like that, so I'll look forward to getting that report to you by the end of the week. So, thanks so much.
Okay. For?
This is a very good introduction.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I jumped right into it. It's a little bit of excitement. Don't forget, Tara, it's Dan. I have Tara Bruce to introduce to you. Tara is a graduate of McKinley High School in Canton and shortly after that she took off and went to Florida, where she obtained a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Florida A and M University and then her master's degree in integrated learning and educational technology from Jacksonville University in 2003. And earned a master's degree in educational leadership with the University of North Florida in 2006 and received her principal's license in August of 2014. She worked from 1996 through about 2004 at several elementary schools in Duval County, Florida, where she taught kindergarten and first grade. She also held various building leadership roles such as grade level chair, school technology coordinator and textbook manager. In 2004, she became an instructional coach for the Duval County Public Schools and in this role, she provided school-wide professional development and standards-based instruction, differentiated instruction and inquiry-based science and math instruction. She assisted teachers using methods of modeling, co-teaching and coaching. She held this position for three years through 2007. In 2007, she became an elementary principal for the Duval County Public Schools where she used best practices to effectively focus and allocate resources such as staff, budget and curricular materials among four low-performing schools. She used her school and student data to establish school policies and to shape classroom instruction. Then she decided she missed, the Ohio winter's here. And we were lucky enough to stamp her up and she's being recommended tonight for an elementary dean of students position and she will be working at Case and Harris Elementary Schools. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
I'm very excited. I feel special. I come from a large district, so this would never happen there. Never. Thank you for the opportunity and I am very excited to service the students at both Case and Harris. I just started on Thursday and then I hit the ground running, so thank you.
Are there any committee reports?
Just like say something briefly, Patrick, myself and David and Matt and Brian this past week, just to talk about and bring some of what we might like the finance committee to look like and function here in the future. And just a couple of things that might be of interest to the board. We briefly talked about trying to get some kind of a dashboard, if you will, for lack of better word, so it's a little easier for anybody, which probably includes everybody, to understand school funding, you know, looking just briefly at something and get a, you know, a glimpse of real time of what's going on with our budget and our finances and things of that nature. So, and we also talked about Brian's want or need for a specific software that helps him, has helped him in the past and I think will help us as well, so just, and it's not expensive by any way, shape or form. There's a licensing fee and an annual maintenance fee, but it is something that will be very likely coming to the board in the near future to help him do his job and help, which in turn helps us do our job, so I'd mention that.
I don't think there's any unfinished business. I know Mr. Sins has some new business she wants to write.
I'm talking to most, I'm talking to everyone. Akron Summit Community actually does periodic forums. We are looking at hosting a youth forum entitled Building Up Our Youth, Framing A Vision For Our Future's Future, targeting young people between the ages of 16 and 24. The forum will help us to begin to assess some of those needs, particularly for those students who are dropping out of school and trying to return back into mainstream. Many of them are without the education necessary, so they feel like they've hit a wall. But it'll give us an opportunity to explore some of the needs to develop youth programming around that particular targeted population. And I've asked for the Akron Public Schools cosponsorship of that event, which is $200 with the sponsorship, but I think most important, just having the board support for the program.
Do we need a motion to, so moved.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Gary Manroll, call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Sins.
Yes.
Senator Miller.
Yes.
Go ahead, Bill.
I'd like to bring up something, go through your 100 and 150 business as well. Just an observation I had this week. It dovetails on something I thought of in the past and I'm just brought it to you again because it happened again this week and actually ends up being helpful to me. On occasions when we haven't had our board packet in these, Maryland will send them out by email to us. And when I get it in email, I can read it on this. So, I was able to read my board packet as I sat in a car on a Thursday night instead of having to make an appointment with myself to go blow dust off this thing and actually read it. And I understand there's private things, we can't send out in email blasts and we have to read them here. And I still appreciate and we still need them here so we can look back on them, you know, in the past, you know, as an archive. But just thought I'd bring it up as food for thought for the board that maybe it would be nice, it'd be helpful for me anyways, if we got them in both manners every week. Because I'm not a Apple guy, I'm a PC guy and I can read it on my PC or I can read it on my phone, my Android, if you want. It just, like I said, it gives me the ability to read more at my convenience, if you will. Like I said, instead of making an appointment with myself to sit at my desk and get this thing out. So, for whatever that's worth, I just thought I'd bring that up.
To me, I can do those commercials on my Mac. It was nice flipping on, I realized that too, that worked out well.
We hope for two of us. Thank you.
Good point.
Just one item from your business and I've spoken with Lisa about it. We did receive a request from the county and I'll be following up to present a resolution of support for the county's sales tax before the Board of Education. So, I will work with the county and David's office and Lisa and Bruce to get a resolution for your consideration together.
Anything else? Just communications equipment stuff? All right, we still have no need for executive session, correct? Uh, thank you. It is a beautiful night, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, darn, almost.
No, we don't have the conversation about something that we're going to need. You're not going to?
Not yet.
You know, Matt, you know?
No.
All right.
Wait a minute.
Could you send them in? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.